Good evening, everybody. And welcome to the June 11, 2024, meeting of the Board of Education for Arlington Heights School District 25. We now reconvene our open session meeting, and I call it to order. But before we begin, I just want to share with everyone visiting tonight that our meetings are when the school board conducts its business, and they are, of course, open to the public. Because we are an elected governmental body, we can only take action by majority vote in a public meeting like this one. We welcome the public to listen and observe, and we have a community input section on the agenda if you have any questions or comments about the business of the board. So with that, Ms. O'Brien, if you would please call the roll.
Olenechek?
Here.
Nierman?
Here.
Jogi?
Here.
Scapalato?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Sirniglia?
Here.
Fassell?
Here.
Thank you, Lana, and please stand if you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, as everybody knows, we have so many things to celebrate in District 25, even when it's summer. And so tonight, we would like to recognize our student athletes from South and Thomas Middle Schools that participated in the state track and field meet. So Dr. Bynum, if I could turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to congratulate all of our students who have qualified for the state level in track and field. And first, we would like to recognize all of our coaches, including Tim Evans, Kim Radzik, Danny Statson, and Tyler Stordahl from South, and Erin D'Amico, Dave Keller, Jo Kim, and Chris Paparonas from Thomas. So thank you to our coaches for all you've done this season to support our students and And we'd like to invite any coaches from South who would like to come up and share any words. Hello?
This is the first year we're starting to pass the torch. There's no Dave Fritner here this year. Can you hear me okay? So the first piece that I just wanted to say was to the parents. We thank you so much for your dedication, you, the efforts that you put in to picking your kids up every day, taking them to invitationals on Saturdays, dragging them all over the place, buying them their state hoodies when we go to the state meet, spending the extra money and the dollars to make these things happen for your kids has been something that we can't thank you enough for, because without you, we can't do this. And I hope that you get lots of thank yous from these little smiles that are up here also. And I also just want to recognize the Board of Ed and our administration for having our back, for helping us to bring all of these guys here. We have enjoyed our partnership with Thomas, working together this year. We're sharing the track, sharing all of the materials. And I even love, too, that as I'm sitting here, I'm seeing not just a South team or a Thomas team, I see two teams kind of emerged as one, which is very cool, kind of just representing our South and Thomas families coming together. So thank you so much.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead. Just on? We're gonna go ahead and recognize some of the athletes. So when I call your name, please come on up. Izzy L. Okay. Emily English. Lily Newman. Gretchen Heckard. Elisa Ferry. So those four, Emily, Lily, Gretchen, and Elisa, they were our 4x200 team. They were the sectional winners for seventh grade girls. Great job. Gretchen and Elisa, actually, this year, they broke the 100-meter seventh grade girls' record at South, so round of applause for them. Elisa now holds that record. Tess Bauer and Ellie Mopin, we'd like to call up as well. Again, Lily Newman, Brianna Clockingay, McKenna Carroll, and Audrey Childs, come on up. Those four were our 4x400 team. They were the sectional winners as well. Round of applause for that. Some special accolades we'd like to notice for McKenna. McKenna won the 1600-meter sectional. She also went on to take second in state in the 1600-meter run. Congrats, McKenna. And Audrey Childs, she was the 800-meter sectional winner. She went on to take third in state, earning herself a medal in the 800-meter run. Along with that, Audrey broke two school records this year, the 400-meter and the 800-meter for seventh grade girls. Congrats, Audrey. And then a special congratulations to the seventh grade girls for taking first out of 15 teams at the sectional this year. For the seventh grade girls, good job. And then some of our boys here, Pierce Baker. Tyler Strauss. Tyler was a hurdler. He took first in sectionals this year for the eighth grade boys. Jake Ayala. And Rodrigo Zapata Solano. Thank you to all the athletes. We do have a video to play here.
And do we have some coaches here from Thomas today? Come on up.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to share the success of our track program this year. I think we started around with 175 students at the very beginning of the season with just four dedicated coaches. And despite having such a large number of students, our team achieved remarkable results, bringing the most amount of athletes we've ever taken down to state, a total of 21 students. And we'll go through each of them. And in no particular order, we have Adelid Gala. Leila Saladino. Leila Saladino. Finley Spokis. Ann Park. Nora Itz. Elle Torres. Cassidy Smith. Nikita Veriano. Sophia Kuros. Camille Devine. Lily Nolden. Braden Jefford. Veda Ashman. Navia Chalakapati. Avis Saladino. Luke Foster. Cass Krasinski. Levi McEwen. Ellie Kerijic. And Audrey Varavandi. Yeah, so I just wanted to highlight just a few of our top-notch athletes who placed all state. If I call your name, can you stand up for a little bit? Nora Itz, can you stand up? Yeah, Nora made Thomas track and field history meddling in all eight events she participated in over the past two years. She is the most decorated Thomas track and field athlete in all of history, and this year she placed third at state for the 400-meter with a time of just under one minute, sixth at the 800-meter with a time of 2:26. Thanks, Nora. You can sit down. Cass, can you stand up? Cass placed fifth in the mile with a time of 4:42, and also fifth in the 800 with a time of 2:06. 800 is the half-mile and the full mile. And then our 4x2 team, Leila Saladino, Finley Spokis, Ann Park, and Nora Itz, can you guys stand up? They completely shattered the Thomas record in the 4x2 with a time of 1:49:06, placing second at state by just 2/10ths of a second. And additionally, Audrey Varavandi placed eighth at state for discus with a throw of 25.79 meters. And last, just thanks to our coaches. It's been awesome this season, and including the South coaches as well, who we have to share facilities with, they've been really generous and helpful with. Anytime we're there, here's all of our equipment, here's what you can use. It's been awesome to have that kind of partnership over there at South as well. So it's been a great couple of seasons. Thank you to the parents for all of the rides and echoing just what the South parents have said, the unwavering support, right? It's impossible for us to, for us four coaches to manage all 175 kids. It's crazy, and thank you to all the rides and helping at time at the meets and helping set up all of that stuff. It truly takes an army, and thank you to all the parents for that. And our administrators, thank you for all of the support that you've given us and including, here's a little plug-in for our fifth supervisor at practices at meets. It's been really helpful, hint, wink, wink. It's been awesome to have extra hands and just all of your support throughout the years. And thank you also to the school board for giving us this opportunity to even go down at state. We know it's a privilege, and it's all of our kids have been truly appreciative of all of that. And thank you all for your continued support.
And I think...
Oh, and we have a video, sorry.
Well, congratulations again to all our student athletes, and thank you to all the families and coaches for supporting these students. And I'm sure Mr. Harris would love a picture right now, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or you might want to continue your summer this evening. So thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Two troublemakers there.
All right. Next, we will move to our board communications. And so first, I want to ask, are there any board member updates as we move into summer? Anyone have any? Gina?
Graduation was awesome. And South was on time. Probably.
All right. Thank you, Gina. And Anisha, did you have?
Yeah, no, ditto. Graduations were really fun and awesome. The ABC25 Foundation Fun Fair was really cool, too. Gina, we'll talk about it in a second. It was great to see so many of you there, and Gina, hard at work as a board member and an ABC25 Foundation member. So all the volunteers that took part in this ABC25 event was amazing to see. It was a busy Saturday that day because we also had the board coffee, and it was great to be with... It was gorgeous day. We were inside. So it was great to be with my colleague, Brian, Dr. Kay, Dr. Bynum was there as well. We had guests from the community. We were there for two hours? Is that how? Yeah. And it was great to be at Coco in Blue, because as a board, we're take community engagement seriously, and we've been going out into the community. So that was really good to be at Coco in Blue. It was a hustling, bustling day. We actually had to give up part of our table to guests coming in, and we were happy to do that. And I saw Liz at the Student Art Show. Maybe she wanted to talk about the Student Art Show.
Sure, absolutely. The district art teachers organized an art show at the Arlington Heights Memorial Library, and there were lots of very proud kids and proud parents, and it's just amazing to see the variety of art instruction that our teachers are doing. It's just really cool. And is art still up now, if anyone's walking through? I don't remember the takedown date, or is it all done?
I think it's down.
It's down. Jenna brought hers home, so.
Okay.
I've seen the art return home. We'll be ready for it next year, because it's definitely a must-see.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Any other updates? All right. If not, we will go to Ed Redd. And Kevin, do you have anything worse to say?
I have quite a lot. So the session of the state congress ended and adjourned on May 26. Actually, they were set to adjourn, but they had to reconvene after Memorial Day because there were a lot of bills that had not been voted on yet. So Ed Redd, at the meeting on June 7, it was shared that they were tracking over 700 bills over the course of the past session, 45 of which passed both chambers. Don't worry, I'm not going to cover all 45. But I do want to, there was a lot that was highlighted in the last meeting, and a lot of it, I think, is relevant to our district, so I wanted to make sure to share. First of all, there were two House bills that were both aimed at supporting, funding to support newcomer students. Those did not end up in the final state budget for education. Evidence-based funding did increase statewide by $350 million. All allocations of funding were either at or below ISB recommendations. There was an increase of the transportation budget by $2 million. However, some of that money can be allocated to reimburse charter schools for transportation costs. Also, $3 million allocated for the state's literacy plan based around science of reading. I learned a new shorthand for budget implementation. It's called BIMP, which I found amusing and interesting. So a lot of items under that category, one of which I already mentioned, was the transportation reimbursement. Also, two bills that were aimed at addressing the teacher shortage through already retired educators were extended. They were meant to sunset this month, but now they've been extended through June of 2027. One of them, anyone eligible to return to teaching in a subject where there is currently a statewide shortage, if they're qualified to teach in that subject, that's been extended to 2027, as well as retirees being allowed to sub for a maximum of 140 days per school year, which is higher than the previous number. That has also been extended to 2027. Also, while there was not a passage of a bill that was going to mandate all electric buses in school districts by a said date, they did allocate 20% of the appropriated funds for transportation to be set aside for the purchase of new electric school buses by school districts. Ed Redd also tracks bills that they have termed hot bills, under the topic, under the category of finance bills. Although nothing has been changed regarding property taxes in Cook County and how that relates to the funding of public schools, there is a new, there's a new study that is going to be undertaken by stakeholders, including taxing bodies, and they're expecting to give their report by July of 2026 with a major focus on why Cook County's allocations of property taxes is different from most other parts of the state and how we might be able to change that moving forward. Let's see. There was no movement on the attempt by many school districts to decrease the use of public schools as polling places because of strong opposition by the Cook County Elections Board. Curricular bills. Education is now required for students in grades six and up on the dangers of fentanyl as part of health education. Climate change education requires all public schools to instruct on the impact of climate change and mitigating solutions. That will be effective by the 26, 27 school year. Let's see. There's a couple of these that are high school only, so I'm going to pass over them. There are a couple of health-related, student health and safety-related bills requiring cardiac emergency planning and placement of AED devices in case of students having cardiac distress on school property. There was also an act passed to support unhoused or homeless youth in school districts. And one thing that Bridget Peach of Ed Redd mentioned is that based on the flexibility of that bill, it potentially allows a little bit of flexibility in districts if they also have students under that umbrella who are also newcomers, which happens a lot in the state of Illinois, that that might help alleviate some of the problems with not having received budgetary funding for that. A couple other quick things. Let's see. Again, I'm trying to not cover too much here. There was a lot, as I mentioned. The student discipline bill, there were requests for guidance on how to implement the new disciplinary policies. That guidance is expected by July 1 of 2025. And then there is a school air quality task force that has been convened. There was talk of legislating requirements for improvements in air quality. That did not take place, but ISB and the Department of Public Health are looking into resources guidance and where potential funding could be found, since it's costly to improve air quality, especially in older buildings. Some of the bills that I've shared or mentioned in past reports that failed to pass, one was the stipends for student teachers, another was the Dual Credit Quality Act. Let's see. And then, oh, mandated planned time to be a minimum of 45 minutes consecutive per day did not pass. And then adding specific curriculum based around personal finance did not pass. There's also been no movement on addressing the tier-one versus tier-two levels of teacher retirement. Let's see. Sorry, I know I'm kind of rambling here. There was a lot to cover, and I don't want to skip over anything. I talked about polling places. Okay. So that's everything, I think, that I need to share. Stacy, was there anything I didn't cover that you think is something that needs to be covered?
The only other, I literally listed almost all the same bills you did. I just had the special ed high-cost funding did pass, sitting on the governor's desk. So currently, if we have students we place in private school settings, there is, and they exceed a certain level over our per capita tuition cost, there's reimbursement for that. The legislation that passed now will allow that reimbursement to also go towards public placements, which includes co-ops like NSSEO. So that's really exciting, since we have the majority of our students that are outplaced are at a public setting versus a private setting.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Stacy, for keeping us up to date with all of that, especially now that we've, the legislative session has finished. So we'll go on to IASB, and this is where I would normally turn it over to Anisha. But if I could jump in first, I wanted to share with everyone that the IASB nominating committee is accepting nominations for candidates for the offices of President and Vice President of the Illinois Association of School Boards. And I'm sharing that with you, because I'm pleased to share that Anisha has expressed interest in serving as president of the IASB. So she would, of course, continue to serve on our board, but this would allow her to amplify her impact by serving member boards across the state. And I mean, I really feel Anisha's work here on the board has been impactful, especially her previous, well, in her role as our president the past two years. We all know of our leadership in sharing our equity journey at the Triple I the last several years, and again, next year. And then, of course, working on our recent board governance recognition. The nomination form calls for a couple things. The candidate has to have demonstrated leadership at the local division and state level, to have participated widely in ISB activities, and to have demonstrated the ability to advocate for public education in Illinois. And I believe Anisha fits those qualifications and deserves our recommendation. But I'd like to turn it to you, Anisha. Is there anything you want to share before I continue?
Yeah, no. Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, first of all, you know, I've been thinking about this for a while, and I want to thank my board colleagues and Dr. Bynum for our collective efforts to serve as a high-performing team, right? And for the past eight years, I've learned so much from our board service, and I'm eager and would be humbled to continue to contribute further. Our board commitment... Our board commitment here in District 25 has given me the confidence. When I started off as a board member, I didn't know much about board service, like possibly many of you, but in the past eight years, serving with all of you and my board colleagues who are here, my former board colleagues, I've just learned so much, and I would like to continue to amplify that service. I'd like to take what we've done here in District 25, as far as effective governance practices, and amplify them across ISB member boards throughout the state of Illinois. I'm passionate about school board service. I'm a little gaga about it because of just the experience I've had here, and I've dedicated three years of my doctoral research analyzing effective board policies across the state of Illinois and would like to give back. I truly believe that school boards can positively impact the members of their district. I'm committed to continue, of course, to serve our nine schools and 5,500 students in Arlington Heights District 25, and want to share and learn from the 853 public school boards across Illinois. Education is a space where lifelong learning, as we know, is encouraged, and I look forward to the opportunity to advocate for the nearly 6,000 Illinois school board members who are in a position to effectively support the nearly 2 million public school students in the state of Illinois. As Greg shared, the ISB nominating committee is accepting nominations for candidates for the voluntary role of President and Vice President, so it's completely voluntary. And as I complete the lengthy nomination process for President of ISB, and I put it in front of you for your review before our July board meeting, and I appreciate your support and encouragement, and I'm happy to answer any questions or entertain any comments at this point.
So, thank you, Anisha. And so, I want to clarify, I was not familiar with the process before Anisha expressed this interest to me to talk about this and how our boards roll in it. So, in this nomination form, there is a place where our board recommends Anisha or a candidate to the nominating committee. So, and it requires action on our part. So, we would take a vote in open session to recommend Anisha. And so, Dr. Bein, that would be something then we would add, correct us, an action item?
Yes. So, that would go on the July board agenda, because I believe those applications across the state need to be in by August 1st. And it would be an action item where the board would say, "We recommend Anisha Jogi for the role of IASB President to the nominating committee." So, you're making a recommendation to the IASB nominating committee. They then take any recommendations they get from throughout the state and determine, as a nominating committee, who they recommend to the general membership. And then, that vote happens at the Triple I, at the delegate assembly.
So, any other, yeah, please, Liz.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment, Anisha. Your passion for effective board governance is so clear and so contagious, and I'd just like to thank you for taking this step and going for it and offering your service in a wider scope. So, thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Yes, Gina?
I would support that as well. I think Anisha's passion has been very boldly demonstrated, and I think she's done a really great job in looking at this, and I think I agree with Liz, right? Her passion for this is pretty much second to none.
It's Gina.
Well, thank you for those comments, everyone, unless there's other questions that, it's really informational at this point, but then we'll see it again on the July agenda. So, thank you. And Anisha, if you have other ISB things you'd like to share, please do.
No, no. This is not a done deal, of course. It's just an interest. Like Lori said, it goes to the wider, like, there's hundreds of boards and will be interested members in this position, so this is just a first step in taking it forward. Thank you.
Okay. And then, we will move to NSSEO. And Liz, if you could take it from here, please.
Sure. Thank you, Greg, for attending in my stead this month. I wasn't feeling great, but I am back. The most interesting bit of information from NSSEO is NSSEO is launching a strategic plan process, and they have hired a firm, HYA, to begin. And as that process begins, I will keep you guys updated and everything that's pertinent to us.
Thank you, Liz. And all right. So, now is the time on our agenda we set aside for community input. If a member of the public wishes to address any item on tonight's agenda, please complete one of the blue forms provided on the table just outside the room and hand the card to Lana O'Brien. If you would please note on your card if you wish to speak now at the first community input opportunity, or if you wish to speak later should we have a second community input opportunity. We do have a couple requests to speak, so I will share with you the following, that the opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions, and public input can be helpful to the board as we strive to make the best decisions for the district. In order for the board to reserve sufficient time to conduct its business and operate its meeting in the spirit of civility and decorum, speakers are expected to adhere to the following guidelines. Number one, address the board only at the time provided on the agenda and only after being recognized by the board president. Number two, identify yourself and please be brief. Your comments must be limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may shorten this a lot of time in order to allow the maximum number of people the opportunity to speak. Bless you. Number three, please be respectful and courteous. The board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or our staff. The board typically does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period, but we do listen intently and appreciate the input from our community. As always, if you have included your email on the form, the blue slip, somebody will get back to you regarding any questions or concerns expressed. So, with that, we'll go to our first member of the public who wished to speak this evening, Mr. Jacob Dewey, please. Welcome, Jacob. Yes, sir.
Hello. Can I speak without this? Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jacob Dewey. I am a parent of two students at Olive Mary Stitt. I am here today as a concerned parent and community member to discuss the impact of cellphone use during school hours. While cellphones have become an integral part of our lives, they have also become a major distraction in our classrooms. Students often check social media, play games, text, and it's diverting their attention from learning. This constant distraction affects their focus and academic performance. The expectation is to always be available by phone and adds unnecessary stress and anxiety. Our children need a break from this constant connectivity to focus on their education, and the ability to stay focused on a task without interruption is a skill that our children are going to need for the future. Social media also creates pressure. Many students feel excluded if they are not constantly active online. This leads to anxiety and a false sense of connection. If we, as a community, limit our children's access to social media, we can foster a healthier and environment focused on real interactions. All of us parents want the same thing. We want our kids on the phone less and to be more engaged in their education and their social interactions. So, why do we give in? It's often easier to allow phone use than enforce limits. By standing together and implementing a school-wide ban, we can make a significant positive change. Several schools across the country have banned cellphones and seen great success. They report better student behavior, increased focus, and stronger face-to-face interactions. These schools show that cellphone bans can lead to a collaborative and focused learning environment. I'm not suggesting that we completely disconnect from technology. Instead, let's integrate technology in a more structured and purposeful way under teacher guidance. This approach ensures that students can still benefit from the digital tools while preserving the classroom as a dedicated space for learning and personal growth. In conclusion, I urge the board to ban cellphones from being allowed in our classrooms. Let's prioritize our students' education and well-being by creating a focused and supportive learning environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey. Our next speaker from our member of our public is Mr. Art Ellingson. Welcome, Mr. Ellingson.
I want to address the board on a number of different issues this evening. One is that I sort of agree with the last speaker, that cellphones shouldn't be used by students, but they should be in the possession of students in case there's an emergency. I remember 10, 15 years ago, there was a shooting in a school right after cellphones were banned, and there was a problem with not getting 911 calls in quick enough because the students didn't have their cellphones. So, I encourage you to let the students have a phone, but like, turn it off when the Pledge of Allegiance is done in the morning, and leave it off till school is over, unless there's an emergency. Turn it on to call 911 and nothing else. I also want to point out the fact that last year, last month, I went up to Bay City, Michigan to attend a Navy reunion with my ship. We went to Bay City, Michigan this year because that's where my ship was built. Our ship was the largest warship ever built in the Great Lakes at the time it was built during 1958, '59, '60 timeframe. And I drove my little Ford Focus with a four-banger engine up there, and then I decided to go home the scenic route. I went north across the Mackinac Bridge, turned left, drove down to Green Bay, Wisconsin. And I normally hate Green Bay, Wisconsin, or anything connected to Green Bay, because it's Green Bay. But gas was 3.09 a gallon in Green Bay, so I fell in love with Green Bay, Wisconsin. I got 54 miles per gallon on that trip. If I owned a Tesla and I made the same trip, I would have emitted zero emissions on the whole trip. But my Tesla battery would have required the following number of pounds of dirt dug up to make one battery for one Tesla car. Two and a half million pounds of dirt you need to dig up to get the rare earth elements like lithium to make one battery for one Tesla. So, when a Tesla rolls off the assembly line, it's already produced carbon dioxide in the atmosphere because either diesel-powered trucks digging up the lithium, equivalent to driving a Ford F-150 pickup truck 175,000 miles with a V8 engine, towing a trailer, getting about six miles per gallon. And I can't imagine how many tons of CO2 are going to be released making these school buses, electric school buses. If you want to learn the truth about man-made global warming, which is actually a man-made hoax, not mad wig science, come to the next Arlington Heights Tea Party meeting, which is going to be nine days from tonight in the Hendrix Room of the library. We start at 6 o'clock, and we'll give you the truth about this. And one of my best buddies in the Navy, I knew him as a lieutenant, the only lieutenant on my ship that made Lieutenant Commander, he eventually grew up to be a three-star admiral, and then it became Director of NOAA, National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration. Why? Because he's got a PhD in physics from Harvard, in addition to his math degree from the Naval Academy. And he knows, like I know, that the whole idea of man-made global warming is a hoax.
Mr. Ellingson, I apologize, but your time is up.
My time is up. But I encourage you to come to the Tea Party meeting and learn more about what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellingson.
And I'm going to give you all a handout so you know what is going on.
Mr. Ellingson, I can take those for the board if you want to hand those to me. I can take those. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Now, for our communication from district partners, and I would like to ask, do we have a PTA report this evening? Welcome, Megan Worthington. Thank you for joining us. Good to see you.
You, too. Well, I can't believe summer is here. What an awesome year we had at Arlington Heights Council and all of our District 25 PTAs. As my time as the council president comes to a close, I can honestly say I'm filled with gratitude, having a front row seat all year long to the amazing volunteer work happening in our District 25 schools. In Arlington Heights Council, we finished the year strong with our scholarship breakfast last month, where Arlington Heights Council presented 10 $1,000 scholarships to former D-25 students who are graduating from high school and off to college in the next few months. Each of the students shared about their experience in D-25 and honored a special teacher in the district that made a huge impact on their life. It was such an inspiring and joy-filled morning. A big special thank you to Ann Williams and Donna Echol for organizing all the scholarship applications, the application readers, and of course, the breakfast event. This is a huge undertaking, and they've been tag-teaming this scholarship event and all the scholarships for the last nine years, and they agreed that they didn't want to end at nine because 10, they couldn't pass up the number 10. So, they've agreed to do it again next year, which is awesome. Huge thank you also to Jody Schaff on the Arlington Heights Council, who worked so hard on our Pack the Piggies fundraiser, which raised most of the money to support the scholarships this year. I also wanted to say thank you to our Arlington Heights Council Executive Board and Committee Chairs, who worked really hard to support not only our local PTAs, but plan programming and collaborate with the district administration and continue to build a strong community at our schools. For all of our District 25 PTAs, as I'm sure you could tell on social media and everything else, the school year was jam-packed with fun fairs, back-to-school bashes, Amazing Teacher Appreciation Week events, talent shows, steam nights, book fairs, art shows, trivia nights, bingo nights, and hundreds of other activities I don't have time to list here. So, I want to, all of them planned and facilitated by amazing PTA volunteers. I want to extend a special thank you to all of our PTA presidents, executive councils, committee chairs, room representatives, and event volunteers. It really does take a village. These are the amazing people behind the school newsletters, the fun events, the classroom parties, who work behind the scenes, who are meeting late at night on Zoom and at the school early in the morning, putting together those really annoying balloon arches that take forever to build, and all the balloons pop while you're building them. So, I want to thank all of them for giving their time so selflessly to our kids, families, and schools so that we have these strong connections and this positive school community. Thanks to all of them. Last and certainly not least, I can't finish out my year without thanking Dr. Bein. Many of you may not know this, but Dr. Bein has been a PTA member for 30 years or 35? I can't remember. 30? 35 years in some capacity. There are a lot of little and big things that Dr. Bein does in the background to support our PTAs that most people don't even know about, and I certainly didn't until I got the experience to be President-elect and then President of the Arlington Heights Council. I had the honor and privilege of seeing all the ways that she supports the District 25 PTAs and the council throughout the school year. I should have known that she'd be a quietly awesome leader based on the first time I actually saw her in person. Years ago, when my kids were pretty new to District 25, I arrived at CAP early in the morning to drop off my daughter, and when I walked in, there was a new CAP employee that I didn't recognize. I thought to myself, "That new CAP employee looks a lot like Dr. Bein." Well, in fact, it was Dr. Bein making slime at 7:00 in the morning with all of the CAP kids at Patton, and I thought to myself, "Wow, what an awesome leader to take time in her busy schedule to make slime with the kids at 7:00 in the morning, when I'm sure she has a million things to do." She was the same way in supporting our PTA. She supported all of the district PTAs with her membership, her support, and of course, will be missed by all of us. So, Dr. Bein, thank you for being such a wonderful support of our District 25 PTAs and our council. We wish you the absolute best on your retirement. Congratulations. And I have a little gift to thank you for always responding to my late-night and early-morning calls with questions and concerns.
Megan, we know how impactful the PTAs are and the councils work, but to hear you go through all those thank yous in as brief a time as you could, it's so amazing just to hear, even encapsulated as it is, just to hear all that's happening and how you're, everyone's, all those volunteers' works really shape the culture we have here, and thank you for your service in leading the council this year. Thank you. Okay. Next is hearing from ABC 25, and Gina, if you could share with us, please.
Thank you. So, we had an incredible fun fair. It was a shift from outdoor to indoor, so we did, in fact, lose our climbing wall. But thank you to South Middle School for having this wonderful layout that allowed us to put up all of the inflatables. I think the kids had a really great time. And the one inflatable that was like a duck and a jump, and it spun around, thank you to that operator who got every large child who got in there and proved to them that it was not as simple as it looked. Special call-outs to principal, staff, administration, family. Special callouts to principal, staff, administration, families, all the volunteers that were there. An incredible DJ, thank you very much. So that everybody had a great time. A special shout out to Sandy Boss for her help with all of the food and with seating our, I'm going to screw this up, hydroponic food farm. Okay, she seeded one with all kinds of basil and lettuce so that all of our families, friends, members, and volunteers could see that money in action and what we donated and enjoy some of the food and taste the fact that it's just, it's incredible. Might as well have been grown in Mother Earth. So that was awesome. We had, we had a great turnout largely probably because the weather actually was a call in our favor because nobody had anything to do outdoors. So that was great. Dr. Bine was there. She had a great time. And incredible, incredible musical chairs event with all, with all of our mascots. And special enthusiasm coming out of Windsor's mascot, which was awesome. It made it even more entertaining and fun. And so there is a video. I will make sure that Adam gets that posted if you guys haven't seen it to make sure that that's up for everybody to enjoy. It was a great year. We had an awesome, awesome year. We also would like to thank you, Dr. Bine, for all of your support. I was not able to go back farther than the, my time of service, which has been nine years, which is when I first met you and got to work with you in the capacity of ABC 25. I have found four district grants that we have funded in the past nine years that you have personally written. Your support has been absolutely utterly unwavering, and we appreciate everything that you have done to continue to support the foundation and support the staff in writing their grants so that we could continue to raise money to give back to our incredible teachers and staff and administration. And we love doing what we do and we're going to continue doing it. And I look forward to more years to come and your joining us for more races and fun fairs as a participant and a lifelong member. So hopefully, hopefully we'll get to see you more next year. And we, we do have a gift, but I don't see, I don't see Angie here to present it to you, so I'm sure she will stop by the office.
Thank you, Gina. We appreciate it. All right, and Allison, it's time for the ATA report. Thank you, Allison Burr, for joining us once again this evening.
I'm in summer mode today. Hello, all. Good evening. I'm going to talk about Summer U because what else is there to talk about right now since the schools are closed? But Summer U is off to a fantastic start. I know because I am there, so I can tell you from firsthand experience. I am teaching a class there this summer myself. We have many smiling students ready each morning lined up outside at Thomas. There are students receiving enrichment classes to pique their interest, reinforcement classes to give kids a boost in areas they may need a little extra in so that they can ensure they are ready to hit the ground running in the fall. My favorite class are those anxious middle schoolers who walk the halls getting the lay of the land of Thomas and practicing combination lock opening, which are super important skills when they get to middle school. And the teachers are also there smiling every day. I do think a half-day program keeps that enthusiasm going for those teachers, but it is a lot of fun and a lot of smiling faces, and I just have a few pictures from Summer U to share. There are some of our students having fun outside and at work in a lit camp, some other students in lit camp. These are my kids from around the world. We were in Germany. Some other kids in our Spanish class today, they made the God's eyes. There's a name for it in Spanish and somebody texted it to me and now I don't remember what it was, so my bad. Other kids working here, they are in Mexico. And some other students hard at work doing all kinds of exciting things at Summer U. And there's that project that I was talking about. So it's a lot of fun. So thank you. I didn't prepare anything to say goodbye to Dr. Bine once again, but we will miss you. And I'm, congratulations on your last board meeting. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Allison, and we hope all our teachers use the summer to rest and recharge, and we look forward to seeing them back in August. Okay, our next section on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is an action item. So could I have a motion, please?
Mr. President.
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve those items on the consent agenda as follows. A, personnel report and addendum to personnel report. B, treasurer's report. C, invoices. D, special and closed session meeting minutes of May 8, 2024. E, regular and closed session meeting minutes of May 14, 2024. F, fixed asset disposal report. G, donations for 2023, 2024.
Thank you, Kevin, and a second, please. Rich, thank you. So Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Neiman?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Scott Polato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Sir Niglio?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Thank you, Lana. The motion carries seven, zero. We're going to move to our business and finance portion of the agenda, and we have a number of items just like last month for action, action items for the board this evening. The first action item is a resolution transferring interest from the working cash fund to the capital projects fund. So could I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the resolution transferring interest from the working cash fund to the capital projects fund not to exceed $314,400.
Thank you, Kevin, and a second, please. Thank you, Anisha, and so Stacy, if you could share the information with us.
Yes, in the budget, we anticipated to earn about $314,000 in the working cash fund. Unfortunately, we don't know until we get to the end of June what the actual earnings for the year are. We're about half that right now, but typically, we have a lot of investments that come up, come due by the end of June. So we will travel, we will transfer up to the amount that we actually earn for the year. And the plan as anticipated in the budget and for the last couple of years is to move those dollars into the capital projects fund to support future capital needs.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions from the board for Stacy? Okay, seeing none. Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Jogi? Scott Polato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Sir Niglio?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Neiman?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana. The motion carries seven, zero. And the next action item is the copier replacement agreement. So could I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the replacement of copiers through Gordon-Flesh Company as presented.
Thank you, and a second.
A second.
Thank you, Anisha. And Stacy, if you could walk us through this one.
Our current fleet of copiers is five years old and our lease expires in July. We have started to see some frequent breakdowns over the last eight months on many of the machines in the schools. I have met with our tech department staff and all of our principals and our teacher leadership to gather feedback on the current system that we have in place when it comes to copiers and printers, as well as proposed changes to the program. While historically, we do let a RFP out to get all interested providers to propose solutions for us, it typically results in us getting new providers, different brand machines every five years, and then we have an implementation curve as well. We do have some major changes in mind for this next cycle and have been very pleased with the experience with the current provider and with the Canon brand copy machines. So we have been working extensively with Gordon-Flesh and our tech department to come up with this proposed solution. We've analyzed the usage, not only on the copiers throughout the district, but also on the various printers in all of the buildings. We've also looked at the levels of the color printing we do versus the black and white printing. So this proposal is going to reduce the number of printers we have throughout the schools by at least a two-to-one, two printers per new copier ratio, with the idea that as we move forward into the future, as the printers begin to fail, we would not replace them. We'll leave them in place while they continue to work, but then would not incur the cost to replace them as we are recommending an additional copier in every school in this proposal. The proposal also right sizes our copiers based on the usage, as well as the projected usage while we eliminate some of the printers. So in some cases, where we historically have had the exact same number and size of copiers in all schools, some of our smaller schools don't need as much capacity as some of our larger schools, so this plan will right-size those. We also hope to, this new plan will have managed secure print software on it so that rather than staff choosing to print to this copier or that printer, they will print to a queue and then they will need to walk up to the copy machine to whichever one in the building they want to have their print job print when they scan their badge at the machine. The goal here is to eliminate duplicate printing if staff print something in the beginning of the day and forget where they printed it to and perhaps print it at another location later, as well as printing things that end up double-sided and they need them single-sided because we do find that there's a lot of that occurring. So the goal here is to reduce some of that and save paper and toner. With the secure print, it'll also alleviate the need to have printers in all of our meeting rooms and offices because we print a lot of confidential documents, especially when it comes to IEP meetings. But with this secure print, people can print it, go walk up and get the document while they're standing there and not worry about the confidentiality. So while the cost is more than our current cost annually, we actually anticipate with this proposal annual savings of a minimum of $11,000 due to reduced cost for toner on the copiers versus the printer because it's seven cents a page more to print to a color printer than it is to print to a color copier, as well as a savings on black and white printing. We also anticipate savings in not replacing the physical hardware of the printers as we move forward, as well as the paper savings from not having so many duplicate copies wasted or printed. We are asking the board to approve this copier agreement, and then moving forward, we would bring a lease agreement for the copiers to the July meeting because we do get a better rate going through a different financial company than we can get going through the copy company.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none. Lana, if you could call the vote, please.
Scott Polato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Sir Niglio?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Neiman?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana, and the motion carries seven, zero. The next action item is the paper bid, so could I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education award the bid for paper for 2024, '25 to Staples Contract and Commercial LLC.
Thank you, Kevin, and a second, please.
A second.
Thank you, Anisha. Stacy, if you could share this information with us.
This is a straightforward bid process for, based on our historical anticipated paper usage, but we do, the companies know that it's up to 2,000 cases of paper. But we don't have, we order it, the schools all order it as they need it. So hopefully, it'll be less than that based on the proposal you just approved. But it is truly, we are recommending the low bid on the paper.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions on the paper bid? Okay, seeing none?
Quick question.
Sure.
And you probably already looked at this, since you're using cannons as well, you're keeping them. Because sometimes different papers don't work well with different printers and copiers and all that kind of stuff. So have you guys kind of looked at that to make sure the Staples quality or whatever we want to call it is compatible?
Yeah, we had Staples was a paper supplier under the state contract, not last year, but the year before. Thanks.
Thank you, Rich and Stacy. So Lana, if you could call the vote, please.
Michael?
Yes.
Sir Niglio?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Neiman?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Scott Polato?
Yes.
And thank you, Lana. The motion carries seven, zero. Our final action item under business and finance is the approval of the audit engagement agreement. Could I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education extend the contract for independent financial audit services with Baker Tilly for three additional years, 2023 to '24 through 2025 to '26, as presented.
Thank you, Kevin, and a second, please.
A second.
Thank you, Anisha. And Stacy, if you could share with us the audit engagement agreement.
Yes, thank you. I feel like we just did this, and then as we're preparing for the audit for this year, I'm like, we don't have an agreement with an audit firm. So presented tonight is an agreement to extend our relationship with Baker Tilly for our financial audit for another three years. Since our previous contract was locked in in 2021 prior to the recent couple of years of high inflation and wage increases, and based on what we were hearing from other districts, what they've experienced over the last couple of years, we did anticipate an increase moving forward. While the original proposal was higher than what you're seeing tonight, I was able to negotiate the renewal presented tonight by comparing the fees as well as the services that are being received by our neighboring districts with competitive firms, as well as the same firm. So at this point, I feel this proposal is competitive with our, what our other districts are paying for equivalent services. We have a good working relationship with Baker Tilly and are happy with their services and timeliness of reporting, so I do recommend the board accept this proposal.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions from the board members?
Mr. President, I just want to say, Stacy, thanks for negotiating a better rate for us.
Thank you, Anisha. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Lana, if you could call the vote, please.
Sorry. Sir Niglio?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Neiman?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Scott Polato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana. The motion carries seven, zero. On to the personnel and planning section of the agenda. We have an action item for the 2024 through '25 personnel plan. So could I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the personnel plan for 2024, 2025 as presented.
Thank you, Kevin, and a second, please.
A second.
Thank you, Anisha, and welcome, Dr. K. If you could please review the 2024, '25 personnel plan with the board.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, board and Dr. Bine. Tonight, I am presenting the personnel plan for the next school year. These staffing changes are based on program needs, student identified needs, and the district's goals. A personnel plan is the administration's explanation and recommendation to the board about positions that should be added or removed for the following school year. Each year, this is presented showing the following. Positions added from the current year's contingency fund that need to be carried forward or removed. Positions related to multilingual language learners. Positions related to general education program. And positions related to the special education program as well. The administration makes these staffing recommendations based on program needs, student identified needs, and the district's goals. This has been an unusual year regarding the personnel plan. We are presenting a third plan to prepare for the '24, '25 school year when we usually come to you with one. In October of this school year, we presented the personnel plan for implementing full-day kindergarten and added 30 additional minutes of physical education instruction in the elementary grades. The purpose of bringing the request in October was to give us time to post-recruit and begin hiring for the upcoming school year. In December of 2023, we presented a second personnel plan focused on the realignment of positions in the Department of Student Learning, including the addition of nine instructional coaches, nine advanced learning specialists, while collapsing nine student learning coach positions and one Department of Student Learning Coordinator position. Now I come to you in June with the current and final personnel plan for 2024. The current personnel plan being recommended to the board is directly related to student enrollment and individual student needs. For example, we have seen an increase in enrollment in our bilingual population, which now requires the addition of 2.0 bilingual teachers fluent in Spanish to support our M L language learners at both Ivy Hill and Thomas. Additionally, some increases are needed for special education support and some for regular education. This plan also includes approximately 125,000 for positions added through the current school year contingency plan that will carry forward. At this time, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the personnel plan, the final one, for '24, '25 school year as presented. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. K. Yes, we'll open it up. Any questions from the board? Are you sure now?
Positive.
Lana will take the notes. This is the final. Thank you. Brian, any other questions? Okay, so Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Faso?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Neiman?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Scott Polato? Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Serniglio?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana. The motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Dr. K. Okay, we now move to the Superintendent's Report. And the first item is our Freedom of Information Act report. So Dr. Bine, if you could review those with us.
The board has in front of you the Freedom of Information Act requests that we have received since the last meeting. All of those have been responded to. This was a heavier-than-usual month for FOIA's that happen sometimes. So thank you to Stacy Malik, who serves as the District FOIA Officer, for doing all of the work to gather these records and provide them in the legally required time.
Thank you, Dr. Bine. The next item in the Superintendent's Report is the Second Reading of Policies from Press 114. And this is an action item. So could I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the policies and exhibit as presented.
Thank you, Kevin, and a second?
A second.
Thank you, Anisha. So Dr. Bine, are there any changes from the last time we spoke with the first reading?
No, there have been no changes since the first reading. I will highlight because the board had discussed it. That includes our recommendation that we continue to have the non-discrimination coordinator, the complaint manager, the Title IX contact listed in each of the policies where those positions are referenced.
Thank you, Dr. Bine. Any questions or comments before we take it to a vote? Okay. No questions, right? Okay, all right. So Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Neermin?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Serniglio?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries... Sorry, Gina, did you say, did you say yes? I just misheard. So motion carries seven zero. Thank you. All right. The next item is a student's suspension review and is an action item. Could I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education uphold the suspension for student 24 WIS 02ZB.
Thank you, Kevin, and a second, please.
A second.
Thank you, Anisha. Dr. Bine, do you have any information to share with the board on this item?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. And so, any questions or comments for Dr. Bine? Nope. Okay. Lana, if you would please call the vote.
Neermin?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Serniglio?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana. The motion carries seven zero. We've arrived at the Second Community Input Section of our agenda. If you wish to address any item on the agenda, please complete one of the blue forms provided and hand the form to Ms. O'Brien. So Lana, do we have any additional forms? Not at this time. Okay. So we'll move on to our Future Agenda Items section of the meeting. And we do have a new topic on the agenda that has been previously discussed with Dr. Bine. So Rich has brought to us for a topic to consider, the third-party, a third-party audit of board policies and administrative procedures. Purpose is for the, for efficacy and compliance. So maybe, Rich, if you could take it from here and share a little bit more.
Yeah, so what I was thinking is, and this is a kind of a comment that came up at one of our Policy Committee Review Sessions, where as we're going through all the policies and reviewing them, you know, there's a lot of legal changes that go through, as well as a bunch of other types of, you know, just changes, things that occur or things that need to be covered. And, you know, as part of our role as board members was really to understand, are the policies actually being followed, right? Are they effective? Do they bring about the desired results that we want out of those policies, since we govern by the policies? And in thinking about it, we really don't have a vehicle that does that for us. Yes, the state comes in, as Lori had provided to us, I think, I don't know, right before the last meeting, every four years, the state comes by and does a review. And if you look at it, what they review is really the legal, the legalese. Are we doing this? Are we doing this? Are we following the laws? But our policies go beyond the laws. And, you know, as we started thinking about, or as I started thinking about this, we have a unique opportunity here. And one is that we have a changeover of superintendents that is going to occur here shortly. And that provides us an opportunity where an incoming superintendent can go, all right, let's take a look at this, as well as say, hey, this is, you know, as we know, Brian coming on board is a new superintendent as well, new to the district in terms of being a superintendent. And this may give us an opportunity to have an independent third-party come aboard that would then look at, whether it be all or a section or something that we can look at to understand our policies in terms of how they're being implemented. Are they effective? So the efficacy of those particular policies? And then, are they being followed in a way that makes sense? Gives us information as well, can then say, yes, we are doing it. As an example, we do have the audit company that comes in, and we just talked about, to look at the financial aspect of it, just to say, are we doing the financial pieces? So that gives us a third-party view of, at least from a financial standpoint, that it's being followed. But all the other policies that we have, we just don't have a third party that comes in and says, yes, they're all good. So I thought I'd throw it out as something that we should talk about.
Thank you, Rich. And so I'll remind the board that, you know, when a topic comes up under this, we're, all we're trying to do tonight is there a consensus on, should we add this as an item on a future agenda? And thank you, Rich, for explaining how it relates to the board's work. So now, any thoughts on, again, should we add this as, as Rich suggested, or modify it in any way in terms of a topic for us to consider in the future?
Mr. President?
Yes, Gina.
I'd like to scope it a little bit better to understand goals, objectives, costs, right? And make sure that we understand, are we looking to validate that all of our staff, educators, and administration all read the updated policies? Are we looking to understand that operationally we follow them? So I think I'd like to hone in on the scope, but I think that it would be worth a discussion, especially in light of the change of superintendent and opportunity that brings, as well as challenges that we have faced as a district.
Thank you, Gina. Other comments or thoughts on this topic? While some of you think for a moment, what I would share is, I agree. I think this is, I think this is a topic for a future meeting. What I would say is, is not to broaden, I think that what you described, Gina, is, I agree with that, you know, really focusing on what should the scope be if we were to do an audit? But also, to maybe pull back a little bit and go, audit is one way to address that. But are there other sustainable, ongoing, systematic ways that we can do this rather than just an audit? And the example I would use, don't know if this would work, but the example I'd use is like we do with our strategic plan. And when you see agenda items, it's tied to the strategic plan. So could, is there a way we can do that as we move through our business and know that, oh, this references this policy and we see that it's enacted? Just a suggestion, doesn't have to be that, but how we could, again, look outside of just the suggestion you made, Rich?
Mr. President, I just want to clarify that part of that scope is whether or not we internally govern this audit?
Okay.
Or whether or not we're looking to cost and pay a third party?
Understood.
To your point, it's very possible that you could have one department look at another department and their implementation and their policies and do the audit because there's independence then there.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. Any other thoughts? Anisha, did, I see your mic is on.
Yeah. I think it'd be, it'd just be a good conversation to have. You know, part of our responsibilities as a board is to monitor performance. And so it would just be a good conversation to say, okay, what would be, it's already happening. Maybe the conversation is, how is that happening? And for us as a board to learn, how is this happening?[1610.64]